Good afternoon, all. I'd like to call this meeting to order, please. Mrs. Byram, can we have roll call?
Yes, Mrs. Anderson.
Here.
Mr. Hopkins.
Here.
Mr. Jones.
Here.
Ms. Page.
Here.
Ms. Quinton.
Here.
Madam Clerk, Madam Chair, the Clerk certifies the presence of a quorum.
Thank you very much. Can we all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Dr. Horneck, are there any other questions for the agenda?
Madam Chair, just to draw attention to Letter C underneath Superintendent's Reports and Recommendations. This is an addition as we finalized this document, this draft on Friday. So this was after the original agenda was posted. And so this is coming for review this evening. Certainly, we could take action, but we're not seeking it necessarily. But the MOU with Parks and Rec is added.
Okay. All right, hearing this, I would entertain a motion to accept this, please.
I make a motion, we approve the agenda as presented. And may I make a motion for Selah Chelsea participate?
We did it at the last meeting.
If you read our policy, BDD, it talks about each meeting. I would say when it says each meeting, we have to do it every meeting.
Okay, even though we listed the dates, okay. That's fine. So would you like to make that a motion then?
Yes. Authorized by Section 2.2-370708. Dot point three, the Freedom of Information Act and School Board Policy BDD, I move that Mrs. Quentin be permitted to participate in this meeting electronically. And the minutes show that her request was based on a temporary medical condition that prevents her attendance.
Thank you. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you. All right, now can I have a motion to approve the agenda, please?
Yes, I make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Thank you. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you. All right, now we'll drop down to the consent agenda meetings and the financial reports for... If we can have a motion to accept those.
I move to approve the minutes from the September 11, 2023, and September 25, 2023 meetings, the November 2023 financial report, and the monthly school nutrition fund report as presented.
Thank you. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you. All right, and now for the monthly operating bills?
I make a motion, we approve the monthly operating bills in the amount of $5,880,494.96.
Thank you. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, motion carries. So now we'll drop down and I'll turn it over to you, Dr. Horneck, for recognitions.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board this evening. It's our honor to bring forward Merrily Grubb, Principal of the Lightfoot Elementary School. And we have some amazing staff members to recognize. And then we will have one more after she is done. And we will move on. So Ms. Grubb, we'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. Good evening. This year, we focused on our school leadership team with the positions that were funded and supported by the superintendent and the school board, our lead teachers. We have Ms. Candace Congdon for literacy. Ms. Jessica Graves from history is not able to be with us. Ms. Shannon McMurray with science. And Ms. Pam Wayne for math. These educators embrace Orange County Public Schools' vision of what lead teachers do to support Lightfoot's Continuous School Improvement Plan, which in turn supports the growth of our teachers and ultimately our students. These educators also support the overall county by participating in the lead teacher meetings with the district coordinators. Their roles include, but are not limited to, assisting in the revision and implementation of curriculum frameworks and pacing guides, providing opportunities for professional learning that reflect best practices and enhance our pedagogy in accordance with our strategic plan that we've worked so hard on. They support their peers by promoting effective teaching strategies that maximize rigor and engagement and allow all students to reach positive outcomes. They assist in supporting and developing new teachers in their content areas. They support our professional learning communities by working with grade levels in their respective subject areas to disaggregate formative and summative data and making instructional decisions have the greatest impact on our student learning. They also work with admin to review walkthrough and observation data and to make decisions about professional learning needs at both the school and the district levels. As the literacy lead, Ms. Congdon has continued to collect, analyze, and review data and plan for our VTSS meetings to help teachers analyze data and to meet their needs with professional development. She continues to work on implementing structured literacy as required through the Virginia K-8 Virginia Literacy Act. Ms. Graves, who I want to mention, even though she's not here, she has helped review and purchase materials and look at practices to focus on cross-curricular instruction in third-grade social studies and fourth-grade Virginia Studies, also working with Ms. Congdon on that. She wrote and received the Loews Grant to Build Future Historians at Lightfoot, which we're very excited about. She has also brought Germana and Jamestown to Lightfoot for in-house field trips. Ms. McMurray for science has helped with focusing on cross-curricular instruction and science reading and math. She's brought attention to making sure the fifth-grade team is helping their students see themselves as scientists. She's working with her team and the third-grade team on planning for investigative, problem-based experiments. Ms. Wayne is making sure teams collect, analyze, and review data for the math VTSS meetings and helping teachers analyze that data to meet their instructional needs as well as what we need for professional development. She has been instrumental in helping implement Math Workshop into practice and making sure students have concrete experiences with math manipulatives. And just a little note, because this is a lot of work and them knowing the data and working with the data, but that has allowed both Ms. Congdon and Ms. Wayne, who have been instrumental in our All In tutoring program that we started in September, and bringing anywhere from 30 to 50 students in an hour early each day, four days a week. So together, this team is why Lightfoot continues to make improvements in our test scores and in our attendance. And I am a better leader because of each of you as individuals and also as a team. Thank you to these incredible educators.
Yes, they are awesome. And so we have to adjust on the fly, Mr. Jones. Mr. Jones will not be here on December the 18th, folks. So we need to show a little love to Mr. Jones this evening. So this is going to be off the cuff. But we wanted to take a moment, Mike, to recognize your years of service on the board. And thank you for your dedication. You approach everything with an open mind, a level head, and a heart for kids. And you have left a really indelible mark here on the board in your service to Orange County and our students. We are very grateful for the time that you have put in. And we wanted to just take a moment tonight to thank you. And I see maybe if the board members would like to join Mike down and we'll all take a picture with Mike since this is the last meeting for you tonight, Mike. And so that is bittersweet for us. And thank you from personally and professionally. Really appreciate you, my friend. And I think I speak on behalf of all of us and we say that we will miss you tremendously. Thank you for your contributions to Orange County Public Schools.
Mike, I'd just like to say it's been a pleasure to serve with you. Judy Carter would definitely be proud of you and that seat that you have held. You have done it, done it well. She'd be proud of you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. That is all this evening for recognition. And I will turn it back over to you, Ms. Page.
All right. Ms. Byram, has anyone signed up for public comment?
No, ma'am. We have no one signed up for comment.
Okay, so declare it closed and we will move on.
All right, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Mr. Arnold is here again this evening. And this was information that was brought last week regarding a change order to approve with StanTech so we can continue to design the walkway connector slash cafeteria extension at Gordon Barber. Mr. Arnold?
Thank you, Dr. Horneck. Since we went over the detailed scope last time, I'll just ask that we approve the amount of $132,000 to add this change order to StanTech's contract. Are there any questions or comments from the board?
Nope, I'm good. Everyone else good?
Is this a total cost of the contract or is this in an addition to something?
This is in addition to the initial fee for the design of the addition and walk in the ramp room and a security vestibule, which is in the neighborhood of $500,000. So this is a change order to that amount.
All right, any more questions? I entertain a motion.
I move to approve, sorry, the amendment to the original contract for the walkway connector and cafeteria expansion at Gordon Barber Elementary School for the amount of $132,000.
Thank you. Can we have a second?
Second.
All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, members of the board. Very much appreciate that. Also, this evening, for your review, we would like to bring forward our proposed budget development calendar. And I can answer any questions as well as Mr. Honnicker. But what we were looking is between now and early January, Gary and I will be meeting with all department heads as well as principals and hopefully as well as board members after we reorganize on the 8th. And our goal would be by January the 29th, at the work session, that we would bring forward to the board for their information and their approval, a set of priorities that we would look to accomplish in the FY '25 budget. Coming back on February the 5th, we already have a public hearing. We already have a regular meeting scheduled that night. So we would like to have the opportunity for the public in a public hearing to provide input on the budget as well as any additions and anything else that they would like to comment on regarding the priorities. We have, if needed, a budget work session that we could schedule on February the 19th. And by the time we get to February the 26th, that's when we would like to target that we would present the budget to the board. And then we would seek approval by the 4th of March, where it would then, at that time, hopefully become the school board's adopted budget. And then we begin the process moving forward from there. And we can get the information of the improved budget to the Board of Supervisors. And so this is our proposed budget development calendar. Again, we are not seeking approval this evening. We can address that in two weeks at the work session. However, we are, we wanted to bring this forward and get this out into the public and bring this for your information this evening as far as the dates and the major timelines for our budget development for FY '25.
Okay, thank you very much.
And then for Letter C, our final port of call for this evening. I have Mr. Rutter here, who has really been taking the lead on working with the county. And in fact, he met with Ms. Straub on Friday. And we were able to finalize a draft agreement. Just for your information, she plans to, she, Ms. Straub plans to take this document in front of the Board of Supervisors at their next meeting on the 19th. If you remember back to early September, there had been discussions about reopening, so to speak, the Hornet Sports Center and a number of other conversations about community use of facilities. And as we particularly were looking at the group that had previously walked in the Hornet Sports Center, a lot of the information is presented seemed like, quite frankly, the school division was trying to operate a Parks and Rec center. And that really should not fall under our area. Our job should be to work with the county and provide dates and times for availability and let Parks and Rec operate the programs that they should be operating. And the folks at the county level and at Parks and Rec agree wholeheartedly. So I think we have met at least three times since that September meeting. And part of the work that we wanted to do first was to establish a memorandum of understanding with our friends in Parks and Rec. And so the document that you see before you is some collective effort over the past few weeks, up until recently finalizing this draft on Friday, which seems to have a lot of support on both sides as far as administratively. Marshall, if there's anything I missed or anything you'd like to fill in, please do. And then again, we would be, we're seeking approval on the 18th for this MOU. And that way, we can begin to even more seamlessly work with our friends at Parks and Rec.
Thank you, Dr. Horneck, Madam Chair, members of the board. You summed it up very perfectly, sir. We just needed some help to get off the ground. And Mrs. Straub and I worked together and closed up what we feel is a nice product for your review this evening.
So again, if there's any questions at this point, I know it's just kind of the first read.
Under Article 3, Number 44, it says parties agreed to provide use of the facilities at no cost to either party. Well, if the Board of Supervisors want to use the school when the school's closed, there's no custodians here. Who's going to pay for the, who's, it says nobody's going to pay. Well, I think our custodians are going to have to be paid by somebody.
That's a great question, Mr. Hopkins, sir. And if you look under Article 3, further down, Article 3.6 is where basically the staff member or the volunteers are responsible for moving trash in that area. We spent extensive time on discussing this also internally at CPS Teak, as well as when I was with Stephanie, to where it was a mutual agreement that we would each clean up after ourselves.
To my, you didn't really answer my question. In other words, we don't normally have somebody at the high school at 11 o'clock at night on a Saturday night, unless it's a special function.
That's correct, sir.
So if the supervisors want to use the building that night, but I think we would have to have some people there. Who's going to pay them? This says there's no pay.
That is correct, sir. The way it's written now, that is correct. What we spent time talking about was that we would be responsible for, whether we used a county facility or if they used our facility, that we'd be responsible for cleaning up after ourselves.
Well, I think there needs to be something. And if they want to pick up the cost from when we use their facility and we want to pick up the cost when they use our facility, I think, I mean, that's an agreement. But this says there isn't going to be any, any extra cost.
Note taken, sir. We can take this back and bring it next week.
Well, I kind of agree with Ms. Hopkins on that just a little bit. Because if they're going to use it and staff it, then and we're talking about, you know, lights and all this other stuff, too. So, I mean, it's going to be a cost to us for them to use it. And we pay electricity, heat and air, and all of that. So... And we get charged to dump stuff at the dump, at the landfill.
Yes, ma'am.
Just saying. Huh? Yeah. So, I mean, we ought to have a little working here, you know?
My concern mainly was personnel. Because if somebody's using a building, I would think somebody that's employed by our school system should be on site. And the question is, if it's not part of their duty to do that, then they're working overtime. And I just can't believe that you're telling me we're going to have, either we're not going to put our people in the school, we're just going to let the other people do it and just give them a key to the building and say, "Go." I don't think that sounds right. But if we're going to have somebody here that's in charge, that works for our school system and is in charge of the building, that person needs to be paid. And it's coming out of somebody's budget. It's either coming out of the school system's budget or it's coming out of the county's. And I really don't care which. I don't have any, I just want the people that are going to... If you have an agreement, it has to make sense. And this one, as far as who gets paid, doesn't make any sense to me, the way it's written.
Understood.
So I do have a question.
Yes.
So the whole point of the MOU is that it is specifically with Parks and Recs? Or is it specifically with both the county and Parks and Recs?
Correct, the latter, Parks and Rec and us. So likewise, us using their facilities.
Right. So it does specify a staff member. So it would either be, how do we, how would we distinguish a staff member with the Board of Supervisors?
Not just the Board of Supervisors. It would be a county employee.
Okay.
Let's say it's the grounds folks that handle the mowing out at the airport that want, you know, they want to use one of our facilities. Or likewise, we want to use one of their facilities. It's for both ways, goes both ways.
Okay. I mean, to me, it would be an idea of kind of getting a comparison. How often would we use their facilities and how often would they use ours? And then if it ends up being equal amounts of time, then it's kind of a wash at that point as far as cost because one is paying for one side and one is paying for the other side. So maybe some type of comparison of, you know, things that we've done over the years that would, we would be able to relate the two and see how, whether one way is getting more of the benefit or the other one is not. So that would be my recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you, Marshall.
Thank you, Mr. Rutter. Madam Chair, members of the board, that's all for this evening.
All righty, we're down to board member comments and questions? Any?
Well, since this is my last in meeting and I won't be here, I've got assigned something today and realized that, so I sent a message forth. So anyway, appreciate the, it's been a pleasure to serve on this board. And it's been an honor to fill such a distinguished seat as Ms. Carter. And the folks that I see having a spouse in the school system that I know what she does every day and children in the system and what they need to succeed. And my biggest thing is, is I hope the incoming folks will make sure we take care of this superintendent, that we vetted him serious. And he had very, very stiff competition, without a doubt. So we were blessed, obviously, to have him. And the last note is, is, you know, encourage people to get involved in these schools because they're not going to run themselves. Go clean tables, pick up trash at lunch. I want to do that Wednesday with some of my buddies. And be visible in these schools because these teachers are really burning the candle at both ends. And we have to have their backs. And I've said it in the past, we need to be prepared on, over the horizon for the next big thing. And I'm proud of our system that we never closed our schools during COVID until just the minimal amount and we got them back open. And we set a good example for other systems who elected just to shutter them. So anyway, that's all I've got. It's an honor to be with good people. So, thanks.
Thank you, Mike. All right, can we have a closed session served occasion, please?
Yes, ma'am. Pursuant to 2.2-3711A of the Code of Virginia, the Orange County School Board will convene a closed meeting for the following discussion of a personnel or the performance of a division employee as authorized by Section 2.2-3711A1 of the Code of Virginia for resignation, termination, transfer, employment, salary adjustment, and retirement of employees and the superintendent's contract.
All right, thank you. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. Motion carries. Chelsea? Question, Mr. Jones?
Do we have the?
Here you go.
Yes. Whereas the Orange County School Board has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote, and in accordance to the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia requires certification by the school board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now therefore let it be resolved, be it resolved, that the Orange County School Board hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by law were discussed; two, only such business matters as or identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, and considered.
Thank you. Can I have a second?
Second.
Roll call, Ms. Barham.
Mrs. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Hopkins?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Ms. Page?
Aye.
Ms. Quinturne?
Aye.
Madam Chair, the clerk certifies the vote as follows: Five yes votes and no no votes. The resolution is approved by a five to zero vote.
Thank you. Disposition of personnel actions. Dr. Hornig, come on with your.
Yes, ma'am. Recommend approval of the personnel actions as presented in a closed session.
Okay, can I have a second?
A second? Oh, you need the motion first.
Yes.
So moved, I'll make the motion that we accept those recommendations.
Okay, can I have a second?
A second.
All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. Is there any other business? Okay. Hearing none, I'll adjourn this meeting.